6:05, I'll call the Board of Selectmen November 28th, 2022. Meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening. First of all, I apologize for the delay in getting started. We had a little technical difficulty. We are meeting jointly with the planning board, the remaining members of the planning board this evening, to consider nominations for new planning board members and to vote with the remaining members of the planning board on appointing successors to Skip Crocker and Kim Drake, who both resigned from the planning board effective December 8th, 2022, all in accordance with Section 11, Chapter 41 of the General Laws. We do have Vice Chair Lisa O'Donnell with us, Planning Board Member Shelley Bradbury in the room, Mike McConnell, and with us online, we have Matt Greco and Simone Early. Matt and Simone, would one of you just unmute yourself and let me know that you can hear us in the room this evening?
We can hear you, Ruth.
Thank you, Matt. Wonderful. So, we have two seats to fill.
Ruth, I just want to-
Oh, call to order. My apologies.
Call the planning board to order.
Thank you, sorry. We have two vacant seats, Kim Drake and Skip Crocker, and we have two people interested in those seats, so if anyone would like to make a nomination.
I will nominate Peter Levasor, who is here with us this evening in the audience.
Thank you, Lisa. And the second person interested in the seat is Judd Lane. Is there a nomination for Judd Lane?
Do we want to get a second on Peter first?
Oh, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are we nominating or voting, Ruth?
Let's do the nomination for the first one. So, we have a nomination for Peter. And Matt and Simone?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
I don't think you necessarily have to vote on a nomination. That's just a name on the floor.
I'm sorry, yeah. If we were just nominating, we didn't have to, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. You just need to vote at the end on the final appointments.
Okay.
Okay. And then I will nominate Judd Lane.
Great. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, we don't need to vote on that. Just a second.
Right.
You don't need anything. It's, anyone can nominate anyone.
And we have, I don't know that we have a need for questions this evening because we have two seats available and two nominees.
Right. We have two seats available, two nominees. Peter is here with us in the audience, and the planning board actually had an opportunity to speak to him several meetings ago, so we've already sort of gotten a sense of him. And Judd was at our last meeting and introduced himself as well, so it doesn't really seem that we need to field questions at this time.
You may just want to ask from all the members who are voting whether there are any other nominations and then move on to voting.
Are there any other nominations from any of the remaining members of the planning board to Board of Selectmen?
No.
No.
No. Okay. Matt and Simone, any other nominations for the open seats?
No, but did Jay withdraw?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, exactly. Was Jay, did he withdraw?
Oh, my apologies. A couple of moments before the meeting, Jay actually has sent an email saying that he's no longer interested in serving on the planning board due to some personal issues.
That, that's why there hasn't been a nomination for Jay. Sorry, Matt and Simone.
Sorry about that.
We suck at remote, sorry.
This makes it a lot easier.
It does make it easier, doesn't it?
A lot more comfortable.
So, since the planning board had an opportunity to hear from both candidates, I think we should entertain a motion to appoint both Peter Levasor and Judd Lane to the vacant seats as of December 8th, 2022, to the planning board by roll call vote. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Your name and aye.
My name is Michael McConnell. Aye.
Lisa O'Donnell, aye.
Shelley Bradbury, aye.
Peter Phippen, aye.
Ruth Perrine, aye. Matt?
Matthew Greco, aye.
Simone?
Simone Early, aye.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
I will take a motion to adjourn the planning board.
Take a motion.
And Shelley, second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Matt and Simone, thank you for tuning in. We will see you on the 7th next week, regularly scheduled planning board meeting. Also, just Skip and Kim resignation is effective on the 8th, which is after our next meeting. So, our next meeting will still be with Kim and Skip, and after the 8th, our two new members will be able to get sworn in as of Thursday, December 8th, and then the following meeting on December 21st will be with the five of us sitting now and the two new members that we appointed this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, planning board members.
Thank you, Board of Selectmen members.
Hit it easy.
Kind of worse.
It's okay.
Just awkward.
It's good they're not stunned. All right. We have until 6:30.
All right.
Do you want to start your report?
Sure.
Yeah?
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Okay, we're going to have our town administrator do the town administrator's report next. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the first item in my report is now that town meeting has appropriated funding for improvements to the town transfer station, it's important to start thinking about how that process will unfold. I did speak with the superintendent of Public Works, and thus far, the Board of Public Works has not determined which type of main trash compactor to go with. Right now, we have a trailer-style compactor, which means a semi-truck drives in and the entire unit is on wheels and it drives away. The more standard type of compactor is called a breakaway compactor. The issue with that, though, is it's much smaller. That goes and gets put onto a roll-off truck and driven away like a dumpster, but there'll have to be more hauls per week because it doesn't have that kind of capacity. And so, before anything can really happen in earnest, a decision needs to be made as to which way the town wants to go. It's fine if the town wants to stay with the contractor that we have now when the extended contract ends on June 30th, because as of July 1, the town is free to contract with any, any vendor or vendors that they want. That doesn't mean there isn't another contractor out there that wouldn't run tractor trailers for us and get the, get the waste to Covanta or wherever we're taking it to at that point. It just means that more, more haulers are set up to deal with breakaway compactor containers than they are with trailer-mounted containers.
Has the DPW calculated what the cost difference would be with the, you know-
It'll be less money to buy the unit, but more money to operate it because there'll be more hauls per week.
So, overall, it'll be more, more expensive on a routine basis?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes.
So, do we care either way? I mean, I don't think people really care that much, other than the funds.
It's just that there's more limited companies that are, that call themselves trash haulers, right?
Yeah.
That are set up to take that kind of unit, but there's probably plenty of trucking companies that will send a tractor and deal with it. So, you know, we need to, they hadn't gotten all the way through it yet by the time of your meeting tonight, but I think we need to get more information from them on which way they're leaning.
Yeah.
I think so, too.
You know, as far as other things are concerned, like whether they're going to buy additional small compactors for compacting the recyclables, and, you know, we're looking into that, they definitely need to improve the building, and I think those things can start right away. But all orders for work will come through you as the Board of Selectmen.
I just have a concern about throwing good money after bad. I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't know what's going to happen on July 1st, and so I'm struggling with the idea of spending money on something that we don't know if that's where our future is going.
You could continue to see if that unit will work through June 30th, and in the meantime, we need to start ramping up negotiations for whatever the replacement's going to be.
You mean for everything?
Yeah.
The fencing, the garage door?
I'm not so worried about the cost of the fencing and the garage door. The compactor itself is where the big ticket is.
Yeah.
And I just don't know if somebody else, if we're going to lean toward Casella or somebody else, because now that we have a little bit of an extension, are we going to go back to the seven companies that we originally tried to communicate with and they weren't interested because it was such a short window? And now we have-
I think we should try again. I mean-
Is Casella gonna, have they indicated that they might evolve into the breakaway at some point, or?
Oh, they, they already, Casella already prefers the breakaway.
Oh, all right.
Because they're one of those kind of standard contractors.
So, is it, is it an actual compactor, or is it just like a dumpster?
The compactor-
The smaller ones?
The hydraulic unit is different for a breakaway style-
Right.
Than it is for a trailer style.
Yeah, okay.
And so, we need a new one, and either way, you're going to buy, you know, one or the other. Yeah, I guess we could work on determining what the options are going to be for contracting going forward. There is the potential to go with Commonwealth hauling, there's a potential to go with Casella, and there's potential to call all those others back in and see what, you know, and I, we can start that right away.
Well, if we don't end up signing another contract such as the one that we're in now, the compactor may be, not to say obsolete, but what if we go and replace the compactor in kind, and then we start working with Casella and they say, this isn't the one we want to use?
This isn't how we operate.
We've thrown away money. I would rather say, who are we going to sign our next three-year contract with, or a 10-year, or whatever we're going to do, and make sure that that is the unit that we purchase?
Yeah.
That's, I guess, I would rather see if we can limp this thing along for the next seven months or until we have a firm idea of the direction we're headed.
Is the, what is the DPW going to use for criteria for determining who?
Well, that, that contract is actually through the, it's going to be through the Board of Selectmen.
But they're going to be making a recommendation?
Presumably, yes, and I think we should go, do what we did before and go back to look at all of the major contractors in our area, all the major haulers, and see if any more come to the table, first of all, and then, you know, see where we go from there.
Yeah.
And then make that, make the decision on the unit that's going to be purchased once you know more about who you're going with.
Yeah, let's get more information.
All right, we'll do that. Process for purchasing 30 Apple Street. Now that town meeting has authorized the town through the Selectmen to take, take that or purchase that interest in property and has funded the purchase, Town Council has a list of things and a schedule. Right now, the, the entire process to, for the town to elect its option to purchase runs through January 25th of 2023. We need to have town meeting approval. That's already done. We need to conduct our title research. That has already been put in motion by Town Council, and if there's any other due diligence, we need to take care of that now. If everything works out the way we were expecting, then that right of first refusal gets exercised by the 25th, and the town has an additional 90 days from that date to actually sign the purchase and sale agreement. That is another document that can be put together right away, and the deposit that goes in with that is $75,000 of the total purchase price. So, it's really just an update. I take it the board wants me to just continue with council and get through every step and make sure we move towards the purchase.
I agree.
There's no fear that we won't meet the deadlines?
No, not at all.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. The issue of potentially selling vacant parcels that are out on Gregory Island, now that the town through the Selectmen has the authority to sell those properties, it would be useful to talk about the board's potential process for, for doing that. All of the parcels are very low value, according to the assessors, with the most expensive assessed value being $3,000. They're all over 2,500 square feet, going up to about 5,000 square, 5,800 actually is the largest one, and any parcel over 2,500 square feet has to actually be advertised in the central register, but given the fact that each parcel is less than $35,000 under Chapter 30B of the General Laws, the state procurement statute, the board is actually free to customize its own process for marketing and selling these properties, knowing that you might get interest from people from anywhere because it's, it's going in the central register regardless. There was a letter written in from some abutters with respect to lobbying to have that land kept the way it is as town land because it's green space in their, in the neighborhood, and they feel that the neighborhood's fairly tight right now and that it would be best to keep it just the way it is. A lot of it is wooded land. So, I wanted to bring that up, but if, if the board isn't interested in that and you want to move forward, the board needs to discuss the process by which we will make this known and move towards sales.
Can we put any restrictions on the sale that we want, like it has to be in a butter or that there can't be storage of cars on it or whatever?
Yes, you can put conditions on it.
Yeah.
We did that with the Canoma Point property that we sold, that it had to stay in its natural state, and they couldn't build on it and stuff such. I think the most important thing for me is that the abutters are notified. It's having things come as a surprise, so if we're going to be selling land that abuts the neighbors, I think the abutters need some sort of notification. That's the most important piece to me. You know, as far as conditions, we should probably discuss that more. I don't know if tonight's the night, or if we want to think about that and put some of those things down.
And I can, I can put something together. I just wanted tonight to determine whether you're moving forward because I don't want to put energy and effort into that if you were going to look at what was requested and stop.
Yeah, I think we should at least move in that direction. It doesn't mean that we'll necessarily go anywhere with it, but-
Right, but at this point, you, you're, you're open to sell, to them being sold.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the Economic Development Committee has worked diligently for several months vetting properties in town that they wanted to sell. They put a lot of work into the ones that were really relevant. They met on this several times, obviously all in open meeting. It went before the Strategic Planning Committee, who looked at, you know, selling municipal-owned land being a viable option, and what it does for the town is it takes it off being town-owned land. We don't collect any taxes. It potentially adds a little bit of square footage for an abutter if the abutter is the one that so chooses to buy it. It becomes a little bit of new growth for us, and it also adds to our tax base, so I think it's kind of a no-brainer. And, and again, it was discussed at Economic Development, and it passed a town meeting in pretty significantly, so I think that the residents have spoken and they're for it, so I think that we move forward.
Yep.
I do, I do just want to state again that the abutters should have some sort of abutter notification to have a fair chance to purchase it if they'd like to protect it.
And we should put some restrictions on it, as mentioned, and we'll discuss that.
Sure.
The next one is the Community Planning Grant, and I want to mention that we are now officially under contract with MAPC to discharge the scope of services in that grant. The total money is $90,000, which is $75,000 from the state and $15,000 that was put up as a match by MAPC. The first meeting of town personnel to talk about how MAPC will proceed will be during the week of December 12th. We don't have a final date yet. Ruth, you got your invitation, right? And I know that Kim Drake was invited. She'll have to pass that off to someone. Lisa, though, was also invited. I was invited, and the people from MAPC, so I think we need to get to that point, kind of have the kickoff meeting, and then come back to the board with more information. If you're interested in the scope of services, I think I sent a copy to you, so that's just an update on where that is, so we're moving along on that. Next one is the use of the remaining seawall grant funds with respect to the stone piers out at Canoma Point. Pam, did you have a chance to pass out these additional handouts? Okay. So, we talked with the engineering firm who did the seawall project for us, and they took a look at a design, supervision during construction, mobilization, and cost per, per square foot, and they've determined that for about $210,000, it will be very possible to get both stone piers reconditioned. We have a total of about $215,000, and that's because we have about $170,000 in leftover grant funds, and we have, Pam, what was it, for town funds, whatever that is up to, $40-something thousand in, in town funds. So, does the board want to get an official proposal worked up by GZA for the services?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's a good expenditure of funding, and it's related to the project that was underfunded or overfunded.
I think it's directly related, and I think that improving Canoma Point, it's needed, yeah.
Great, so I'll have that for the next meeting. The decorative lighting project. So, we're still waiting to go under contract with Stan Tech, which is our engineering contractor for that project, and the reason is we are still trying to find the as-built plan that Mass DOT would have had after the causeway was rehabilitated a number of years ago. Mass DOT has looked, and they do not have a digital copy of it in the necessary CAD format. We need this because that's how we would build upon, the, the lighting design would build upon all that work that was already done. So, we got back in touch with the contractor who did the design for Mass DOT. Their name was Mystery Associates. The engineer who was working for Mystery at the time is no longer with the company. I think he's retired. We did find somebody there who is going to look through all the computer files and determine whether they can come up with that as-built plan, because we have a paper copy of the as-built plan, and we know it was generated in CAD, so someone must have that base file. So, that's, that's the update on that. We don't really want to get started until we're sure, because if we don't have a good base file, that means it either needs to be resurveyed or digitized, and both of those are very expensive. So, I'll, I'll get you an update on that next time, but we have $100,000, it was just appropriated by town meeting, $160,000 that was in the grant, $50,000 from the legislative earmark, and I have not heard back from Light Up Essex. I did reach out to Hunter Jay. I don't know if anyone has heard from, from him on that, but that would certainly be welcome and helpful, because pretty soon, we will be getting the engineer started and getting ready so that in the spring and summer, we can get these lights installed.
Where did this sample come from that was in our-
Oh, yeah, I want to tell you about that. So, let me just take this note first. So, you have a sample of, and if you open that up, you'll see that the light on the front doesn't really look right. Do you see how it's more elongated when you look at the cut sheet? That's really what we're going for, and it stems from, Jim Witham was able to pull out photos of the original gaslights. This is the best photo we have.
I have it. I just don't love it.
Right.
I hope that we have other options.
This is why I'm bringing it up. Is it something that you want to duplicate? It's basically a plane pole with relatively, relatively unornamental fixture. That's one direction you could go in, because when we do get started with the designer, they're going to want to know, well, what style of lamp do you want?
These lamps are around the old-style one. I've seen them, and they're, they're a lot more decorative than they look there. I much prefer that over the, the one we have.
Because this thing here pretty much looks like that. It has a, has something on the base, a really, you know, plane pole, and then not much on the top.
Yeah, the, the light-
But that doesn't mean you have to go with that. That was my first thought was to, do you want to duplicate? It doesn't have to be that.
No, I understand. I don't think there's-
But do you want to duplicate the style of the gaslight, which was pretty plain, or do you want to come up with something else?
I don't feel that we should have so many options that this becomes a muddy issue.
Well, that's precisely why I wanted to look at what was there before, but-
Yeah.
I agree with you. It's not very pleasing.
I mean, honestly, if this is my only choice-
How about something like those? That's similar.
Truthfully, so the city of Beverly, I work in Beverly, and the city of Beverly has been installing all of their lights up and down Rentoul Street, and they are using these what appear to be old-fashioned bell lights. They're more of the, you know, the overhanging bell light. They're absolutely beautiful. They look old-fashioned with a brand-new touch. I can take a picture of that and show you. It's much more pleasing to the eye. They have the flag pole, you know, the, the poles that you can put the flags on. They have the ability to hang baskets.
Right.
These just look like they're going to blow over in a windstorm.
They do. They look very-
Flimsy. I would rather not put up lights if this is our only option.
No, and so I started there, but I wanted to get into this conversation about, okay, let's, we're talking about lights now. What do you want?
But I would, I would go after seeing if you can find these exactly replicated, because they're, I know what these are. They're much bigger, they're much sturdier, they have a lot more ornamentation, even the light, the lamp part itself is, sometimes it has like a crown around it, sometime, they're actually probably like, you know, two feet to two and a half feet tall. They're rounded. They're much nicer looking, and they often have a, a piece that cuts across, I don't know what it's called, right up near the top. If we could find something like that, too, and then, yeah, there you go for the-
This is the base of the ones in Beverly.
Yeah, much more sturdy.
They're much more sturdy.
Yeah.
But they're also quite thicker than what we're seeing here.
Yes.
Brendan, is it on?
And much, much taller.
I'll have to, I'll get you a picture of the top of this whole light.
Yeah.
Brendan, the Economic Development Committee is meeting on December 8th?
Yes.
Is that on their, is it December 8th?
The agenda, the agenda is not done yet, and we're working with the, with the chairman on that right now.
Okay.
So, will that be on the agenda?
So, can we put that on the agenda? I'd like the Economic Development Committee to weigh in on the downtown lighting, since their goal is to support business and bring some beautiful to our downtown area. I mean, certainly, we get to sign the contract, but I want some input from other committees. It's important.
We'll get that, and then at your next meeting, we can update you on where we are.
Perfect.
I'll see if I can find a better example of this in the person, because I've seen them around in-
Okay.
Various locations, maybe Newburyport, wherever.
And it's 6:30 now.
6:30, we have an appointment with Dana Menon, Town Planner, and Jody Harris, Chair of the Economic Development Committee. If you would like to join us at the table, we have chairs and microphones for you.
As many chairs as we could want?
Yes, two each.
One for your feet.
Yeah. So, thank you for joining us. We have Town Planner Dana Menon, Economic Development Committee Chair Jody Harris to discuss the town's plan for an off-season event to be funded using the recent Urban Agenda Grant Award and possible vote to authorize the chairman to sign any remaining urban Agenda Grant paperwork, and to enter into a contract with the Civic Space Collaborative for the planning of the event for technical assistance associated with the Related Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant. So, that's a lot of words for a couple of grants. Dana, if you can just rewind time, because I know that some of this came out of the LRRP, which was the Local Rapid Recovery Grant that we entered into with the town of Manchester during COVID-19 to help support the recovery of local businesses to get us through the pandemic. So, all of these words are not as fresh on our minds as they probably are with you, so if you can bring us back to those grants and just give us a little bit of history to get us to present day.
Yeah, so coming out of the LRRP, which is Local Rapid Recovery Plan or Project- Yeah, so coming out of the L R R P, which is Local Rapid Recovery Plan or Project.
Oh, there's a microphone.
Sorry. There were several recommendations coming out of that. So kind of when that report was finalized, I set about applying for grants for the recommendations. So the lighting project was one of the recommendations that the community arrived at with the L R R P consultants. There was also an off-season event, which was with the idea of having kind of two main goals, bringing the community together, that people felt like the community hadn't been able to kind of get together because of COVID, and also to drive income to the local businesses in the off-season. There was also a placemaking plan. I think those were the main, oh, and a, an economic development consultant, but we haven't, I haven't been able to find a good match for that, for the grant, for a grant funding source. So we were, after a couple tries, successfully awarded the lighting project, a technical assistance grant for the placemaking plan, and an award for an off-season event, a singular event, and that would also prepare us both kind of with planning materials and durable goods to hold that event repeatedly in future years during the off-season. So we have, these are, this is talking, this item on the agenda is talking about two different grants. The Mass Downtown Initiative Grant is the placemaking grant, and that is a technical assistance grant. So the state contracts directly with a consultant for $25,000 worth of work with a community. So they, the state assigned us a consultant, and the consultant is going to work with us up until we reach $25,000 of their time. The other grant is the off-season event grants, and we are given that money directly to use for the event planning and execution and purchase of materials. Both the placemaking grant and the off-season event grant end at the end of the fiscal year, so end of June 2023.
And today, we did a sit walk with the people from, the primary purpose was through that Mass Downtown Initiative Grant, and that company, that, that firm that's being assigned, which is the, what is it again?
Civic Space Collaborative.
Civic Space Collaborative. They just wanted to get a sense for the areas that we're trying to unify and improve. And we, I think we achieved that objective, and it would make a lot of sense, I think, to utilize that same firm, because they're available on the state bid contract, which means we wouldn't have to have a separate firm for the off-season event when we're trying to actually move the technical assistance, move through that, and move into the off-season event in a fluid way. We don't want these things to be disconnected from one, from each other. We were looking to potentially use that $51,000 for the off-season event grant to maybe help us get some of the accessories for the new lighting project, and the event could have been a kind of grand opening for the new lighting. But given the timing of this grant, we looked at it so many ways, and it's just not going to happen. So instead, it needs to be some other type of event that's not related to the lighting. And I think we can achieve that. And I don't know if the board has questions or.
The timing is such that it needs to be done by the end of the fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
Yes, which means the event needs to be done this spring, March or February, March.
Just to be clear, when we applied, the description did not imply that it had, it said that you would have one year to complete the work.
Not at all. And so now it's like.
And so then it was a bit of a, now we're shuffling, trying to figure out a new plan.
It's like, you have this money, but hurry up and spend it.
So I have some questions. So in the, we were provided, I'm guessing you did this. So in the outline, revised off-season event description from 1115 to 22, just a few things jump out at me. So site visit you did, community outreach, I'm not exactly sure. Has that been done?
So the site visit that we did today was technically for the placemaking plan. It just so happens that the consultant that we were assigned for the placemaking plan is the same one that had been sort of doing pro bono advice for us for applying for the off-season event.
Right. And I don't even think the people at M D I knew that.
No, they didn't know that they, this same firm, the Civic Space Collaborative, had worked with the L R R P program. So they were recommended to us when we were looking for someone to help us draft up a scope and a budget for applying for the grant. So they have been helping us with that, and then it turns out that they were assigned to us anyway for the placemaking plan.
So the placemaking plan, is this working on the downtown areas, like the pocket parks in 24 Martin Street?
Yes.
So Jody, you've already met with Leahy Construction. So are we running two separate things simultaneously? Are we meeting with different people, or are you, this is all the same thing that we've already done?
The 24 Martin Street is separate. The placemaking plan is a little bit different. We met with Leahy, looking more at maintenance and upkeep. They also will do installations. They have a design team if we want them to. They would flip the causeway seasonally if we wanted to, bulbs in the spring, mums in the fall, you know, but.
More maintenance.
More maintenance than.
But even with respect to that, it was our hope that if we get the placemaking, $25,000 worth of technical assistance underway right away, which it's ready to roll, even that, that process could even inform the maintenance and whatever, because they're going to be thinking about the theme from the beginning, which is what we wanted to do.
Okay.
And then the seasonal event can follow really both of those things, the spruce-up and the placemaking plan. And if we're using the same design firm on, on the two grants, we're hopefully going to get a much more unified product out of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the placemaking plan will kind of create a master plan for what we want in all the different spaces and how we want it to all look connected. So.
And walking it to, it doesn't look very connected.
Yeah, it doesn't create any detailed plans. It's, it's a lot of public process, getting people's input on things. And then we had actually put into, to further confuse, I hope this doesn't add to the confusion, we had put into the scope for the placemaking plan a couple of community pop-up events to try out a couple of temporary installations, see how people liked using the space, spaces under different configurations. So again, that was another opportunity we saw where we thought, well, we could make that placemaking pop-up event part of our larger off-season event. So it's a community input opportunity to kind of amp that up a little.
One should feed the other, and it should actually make the event money that we got with a very short fuse as beneficial as possible to the, to the town.
But I guess my question is, when we talk about placemaking in pocket parks, we're talking about three-foot wide by 12-foot long.
I said, you're looking at this strip of dirt right here. That's what we have.
Yes, with two benches and some trees.
They said, you would be surprised what we'll be able to come up with, because they're used to dealing with urban landscapes where things are on a micro scale, and they know, that's what they do.
I guess my concern about, I'm not trying to down these, the plan. I just want information. But so we go back to parking. We have nowhere in the town to park. So if we do pop-ups on these little islands on the causeway, we're now invading the businesses' parking lot.
I don't think that's what you mean by pop-up. I think what we mean is a temporary, easy-to-put-together sort of event that would be in the green spaces that we have. So like, the event pieces would happen in the, in the park spaces.
Like 24 Martin, not, not in these little.
Okay, because the only real park we have is 24 Martin Street.
Right.
And if that's going to be placemaking with bocce courts and such, I'm just trying to get a visual of what we're doing here.
This is, this is to take a look out. Okay, so we have, we have 24 Martin, we have Town Landing, that's, that's a town place. We have the little strip in front of the village. We have those little tiny place strips with benches, and we have Paglia Park when that gets rebuilt.
Which we don't own.
Right. But, and I explained that, and they said, no, there are still things you can do by putting stuff on top of the ground without digging into it and, you know. And so what they said was, yeah, we think we can take all those little things, and there's not a lot of it, and they agreed to that, and we can come out with some really good unified plan for the town to take what you have and make it as pleasing as possible.
And that's placemaking.
That's placemaking.
Okay.
And then the pop-ups would be in that sort of same theme, whatever they come up with, for two different events?
Yeah, yeah, it would be, I mean, well, it could be one unified event. In the placemaking plan, it was, you know, do these two small little things. If we do this bigger event, we'll probably just.
I think it's better to use the bigger event, because if they recommended pop-ups during the technical assistance, I don't think there's any money, right? It's pure.
We get more, yeah, we can direct more of that money towards the other.
Yeah, right now, the 25 grand is to pay this firm to get their advice and their report. There's no money in there to run pop-up events. So it'd be better for them to, all the while, be thinking about what we're going to use the other grant for, and look at the whole thing as like a $75,000 grant. That's the way I would look at it.
Okay. What is the community outreach?
So the, for the, so this is for the event. So we didn't, we haven't defined it specifically, but I think it's going to involve getting some feedback from the community on what kinds of events they want to see, and then also letting people know what's going on, you know, both things, so they can get people giving input and letting them know about the process and what's going to be coming down the pike. I don't know specifics. We haven't hammered it out much more than this for now.
Well, I think what we can do is, in between this meeting and your next meeting, get back to the firm and say, you've already got the, the technical assistance piece. Please now write a proposal, knowing that you have that, as to how you're going to take the rest of the money and follow up the first piece. And I think they can deliver to you something that you can look at and critique. What Dana did was just kind of, okay, these are some general ideas. But now, if they're interested in, in that next contract, they're going to come up with a pretty detailed proposal for you.
In the last three weeks, we've changed directions a lot on which way we're going. So I think we wanted to make sure that this was a general direction we wanted to go before we asked them for more.
If you're okay with using the same firm, which I think is a good idea.
Yeah, the firm isn't my problem. It's more the bits and pieces in here that I'm just questioning.
I would take that as a general guide. I think I can come back to you. Dana will work with them starting tomorrow. We can come back to you at the next meeting, probably with a much more detailed proposal.
Okay.
Well, they've, you've just gone through and pulled out the components that need to be done as part of it.
Based on the application more than, than the proposal.
Yeah, it's a broad scope.
But haven't figured out what those details are going to be yet.
Yeah, I mean, they, they helped us, they've done these kinds of events with other communities. So they helped us kind of write up these bullet points for all the different kind of category buckets, yeah, that we need to.
They, meaning the people that you got the grant from?
No, sorry, the Civic Space Collaborative, the consultant that helped us write a scope and a budget for the grant application, and that has also now been assigned to us for the placemaking grant.
Okay.
Which is called, yeah, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative. That's the 25,000.
These were the two gentlemen that we met with out of Sutton, Mass, right? Oh, different?
No, I think this is different.
Different, okay.
Yeah, this is a different group.
Now, what I think we could do actually, too, because we still haven't even finalized the scope of services for the first 25,000, we might even write into that that they're going to give us a very well-thought proposal for the next piece.
Which do you mean by the next piece?
The 50,000.
51,000.
Yeah.
I don't want to spend a lot of their time on it, but I, you know, it'd probably be a better proposal than if.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like any, any.
Officially, that is part of their work, yeah.
The consultant who is looking for work will write a good proposal. I don't know if we need to pay them to do it. I mean, they've done a lot of good pro bono.
Well, why don't you, why don't you talk, if the board's okay with this generally, why don't you talk to them about getting something so that we can show the board at the next meeting, which is December 12?
Yeah, because I still, you know, I want to know more about, is the event working group going to be the Economic Development Committee? I want to know about the specialty items. What is it that we're thinking about purchasing? Because I want to make sure it's something that is going to work for us into the future. If it's not, I'm not, I don't want to waste money. I, I mentioned to Brendan before, Dana, I know that this was a grant that we went in with Manchester on. And if we find that this isn't something that we're going to be able to pull off by June 30, I would just assume, see Manchester get this money and have a big event, or is this not the one?
So what happened, what it was, what happened was, we each submitted an application for the same project.
Okay.
We both got awarded the money in full.
So this wasn't one we did jointly?
So we, we were going to do it jointly. They misunderstood our application and gave us each 51,000.
They doubled the money.
Jointly $51,000.
Oh.
So now.
So that would give Manchester $100,000.
Okay.
So now we can each do $51,000 of work instead of sharing it, which is great.
I thought 51 was our portion of the shared grant. I didn't realize that we both got one.
Do they know who their contractor is?
Well, so we were still intending to do a shared event, and say, great, now we have $102,000. But the Civic Space Collaborative, when I was following up with them after we heard about the grant award, they said, to be honest, in the last six months, we've done some of these multidestination events, and they haven't worked out how people wanted to. People thought of this great synergistic thing, and people go to one place and then go home. They don't visit multiple locations. I said, well, we really just don't want to make sure that we're competing with each other, and that we were thinking it would be hard to get people up here for two weekends in February, you know, if you've got people from out of town. He said, I really think that if people are coming up, they're only really going to go to one place anyway, and you're trying to offer transportation, and like, it's, you're going to spend money on stuff that people aren't going to be using that much. So they actually advised to do two separate events. And I think as far as coordination, it would be timing and thematics, you know, make sure that we brand them completely differently, two different reasons to come up here, time them strategically so that they aren't competing with each other. And I think that's the direction we're heading right now, based on their recent experiences.
Yeah, so that's my concern, is that the goal of this was to support businesses. It was local rapid recovery. And if we have an event at 24 Martin Street, are people going up to the causeway to frequent our businesses from whatever event we decide we're having? That's one question. Another one is, like, how will those jive? The other question is, you know, I guess I want to make sure that the focus isn't just specifically on restaurants. I mean, our restaurants are phenomenal. We have great food, you know, awesome drinks, but are we supporting our antique stores? Are we supporting our new bakery? Are we supporting the new little cause? Or, you know, Cuttlefish is no longer there, but all of our other businesses. I just want to make sure that this is not always about the restaurants. I want to support them as well, but they're doing pretty well. If you come through our town any given night of the week, our restaurants do quite well. Our antique stores are closing on a rapid, you know, rapidly, and they're not being supported the way they should be. I'd love to say, let's go down to Tom Lang's and look in that gorgeous window, or Andrew Spindler's. So how do we support all of our businesses? That is really important for me. And then I want to find out, too, are we making suggestions to this company, like, these are the ideas we have for this event, or are they looking at our space and they are coming up with suggestions?
So I think the L R P specifically said that the two reasons for holding the event were to bring community together and to drive business to the downtown, and create, and create, again, branding as well, a branding opportunity. So in my mind, we, we give them a clear directive that we want to create a community event that takes place, you know, maybe there's family-friendly activities down on the, you know, park or whatever, but that there's things happening on the causeway and up and down Main Street, so that people are going into those stores. And then the, the working group, the idea is to get a group of people together that are representative of all these different groups. So I started reaching out to some people that I have a, you know, more familiarity with, but I was just on the phone with Donna Roy about reaching out to additional folks that I don't, I don't know as many of the business owners in town. So getting good representation, so we make sure that we have cultural district folks. I talked to Tessa from the senior center, that we have restaurants, that we have shops, that we have, you know, somebody at the table who is helping come up with an idea for exactly how we want to shape this event, and how this group of people can carry it forward using the template and materials created and purchased by the, doing the, having lift, the consultant doing the heavy lifting this year, so that they can carry it forward in future years. So it's really, it's really not about them, I mean, I'm hoping they'll bring their expertise and good ideas, right? But it's really about them facilitating, facilitating something that's going to work for Essex. So we can tell them, you know, exactly this, you know, this is what we, what we want it to be.
In whatever decisions they come up with, who makes the final, does the Board of Selectmen make the final decision if we, if that event makes sense?
I don't know. I mean, I suppose that's up to you folks. I was hoping that the working group would really be the sounding board, you know, because it's representative of all these people. But I would imagine, you know, there's going to be things happening outdoors, and we're going to have to kind of come before you for approvals for things. And, you know, we can check in, you know, with whoever needs to be at the table, and whatever level of approvals you think are required by the board for whatever activities are going on. I mean, I think it's infinitely, you know, customizable to whatever you all think is appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, that makes a lot of sense, I think, and maybe just bring it to the board every, you know, I mean, once we get, once you get a plan put together, I mean, I think.
Yeah, right now, there isn't really, we haven't been able to get too far with a plan, because I, I didn't want to sit there and come up with a plan myself, you know? And I think the L R P process was a good inclusive process, but it only went so far in terms of defining all these things. So we've been a little bit of chicken and the egg, where I've been applying for grants, but we can't start really dig into it until we knew we had money, you know? And so now that we have money, it's kind of reaching back out to people who had expressed interest and saying, are you really ready to do this now? Because here's the money. And people have been saying, yeah, yeah, let's do it. So.
I think we can keep in touch with the board, and I can keep up, you updated as to which way it's trending, and if at some point you say, wait a minute, we wanted to do this instead, I think we can work with that. We don't want the board to feel like, well. well, this thing went in plan and it's, it was a waste.
Yeah, and also a working group. I mean, typically, whenever we're going to create some sort of a group, the Board of Selectmen has input on which, you know, groups of people we're going to approach to make sure that we are representative of everybody and not just specific groups in town.
Yeah, the grant contract is is with the Board of Selectmen, so.
It's, it's again, chicken and the egg. So we're, we're doing things before, it's, it's coming to us after it's done. And so we're just looking to rubber stamp something. That's not how I work. So, yeah, let's keep us involved. And I'm guessing that this will be on the agenda for the EDC at your next meeting?
It is on the agenda for December 8th.
Okay, and you'll have representative, representation on this working group, I'm assuming?
I would assume.
Okay.
The other thing I want to talk about, though, is that these two grants total $76,000. But of that $76,000, after our conversation, $46,000 of that are consultant fees, between the 25,000 and then, and then 21,000 of the 51 is earmarked for consultant fee. I have a concern, if we're using the same consultant group, that 40, they can't give us value for $46,000. Not that two, two different consultants is the way to go either, but that's a lot of money to expend on a consultant and have 30,000 left for us to spend. And are we, are we tied to that, or can we use some of that money?
I think that's a, I think that's a fair point. If you zoom out, I think looking at it as, we really do have to look at it as two separate awards. The $25,000 for the placemaking plan is actually, I've heard all along from both different consultants and from the state, that $25,000 is kind of tight for a good placemaking plan. And so they work with their consultants to really try to get the most out of the placemaking plan.
Yeah, and that's, that's an overarching look at all of our areas. The event is, is, like Dana said, they're going to do the heavy lifting. So like, when this event gets pulled off, they're going to be there making sure that it happens. It's not just some volunteer thing, and it's going to cost money.
The consultant is going to be there?
Yeah, we can't be running the show on the day of.
That's why.
Okay, so they're going to be hands on the ground, not feet on the ground, okay.
It's like, you know, when you have a wedding, you pay people to do it. That's what this grant is actually trying to do.
So they're like the event planner?
Have in a wedding?
And they're going to be the event host?
I'm already married.
They're going to do it all. Oh, okay.
Well, they're going to, I mean, they're going to hire some other folks to help.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
But they get you over the finish line.
The placemaking is pretty much all consultant fee anyway. They're coming up with the design and all that sort of stuff.
That's 100%, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll just keep you informed. We'll see how this thing comes together.
If you would like to, I can certainly send you the names of some of the, of the folks that I've talked to kind of so far about the working group, but it was not like a finished thing. It was just, I didn't want to come here tonight with the question of, can we carry this forward, and not know if there's anybody willing to step up and do the work. And so I thought it'd be helpful to know, yes, there are people who were involved in the LRP process, who are already involved in some of the things downtown, who, who are willing to take it on, so that it has the possibility to live on beyond this one year, so.
I just don't want to get ahead of ourselves. Like Brendan and I had talked about, I was trying to figure out what it was that we were going to do within a shoulder season event and where this money was going to be used. And he said, you know, for instance, over at Mascanoma Park in Manchester, they have all the seating for the concerts in the park, et cetera. He said, so the goal would be that we would use this funding, not for seating, but just like a general statement, we would use the funding to get stadium seating so that should we have concert series going ahead, we have the seating. That's a fabulous idea. I don't know that Essex has the volunteers or the wherewithal to actually have this type of thing once a month in Shepherd Memorial Park like Manchester does at Mascanoma. So then I started saying to Brendan, well, where would we store these stadium seats? So I want to make sure that we're thinking really far down the road before we go and make a purchase, and then we're going, do we need to now build a new building to store these tangible items? What are they? So when it went, when it kind of went back to the light poles and it was flag mounts and basket mounts, it just made sense. Now I'm feeling like we're wasting money.
I agree. We, we have to kind of retool this whole thing. And I think we'll bring forward a proposal that you can actually look at and say, you know, does it continue to make sense?
Right, sure. And and I just want to make sure that we're inclusive of all the businesses.
Yes, yes.
That want to be part of it. But I want to make sure they know they have an option to be part of it. So if we have a date, we know what we're doing, we've reached out to everyone along the causeway, and we say, have lights in your windows and the doors open, hot chocolate on the table and ready to have company. So that's my big concern.
Yes.
Is, will the placemaking plan be far enough along for two events or a single event in March or whatever? I mean, so there'll be a theme established that will fit?
So I think the, the pop-up events that were part of the placemaking proposal were supposed to be sort of trials to see.
Okay.
Like try some temporary seating, kind of whipped up, you know, in somebody's shop class or something, to see what the different uses would be in, in the parks on kind of a, and then it could be, people can move stuff, you know, to places they want. You can talk to people about how their experience using the space in that way.
So it's a pilot pop-up project?
So, yes, it's a pilot pop-up. So it would be temporary and.
There'll be, there'll be enough of a theme.
They're, they're ready to roll right now. They're going to start working on it. So, yeah, I think we'll have that.
Okay. We look forward to hearing more.
Dana, maybe you can stay for the electric vehicle thing. That's next on my report. So just wanted to update the board that Weston and Sampson is an engineering firm that would like to put electric vehicle charging stations down at the municipal parking lot. The Board of Public Works, which manages that area, is on board with that. The only issue is, we're not looking to incur any expenses or, or assume any risk. Let's say those things get put there, and there's an ongoing cell phone dialer bill, and there's ongoing, whatever it is, maintenance. It's not anything, if, if they're not popular, the things are going to lose money. So we've, we got pretty far along with Weston and Sampson, saying, if we did this with you for three years, which is the longest contract term that the selectman can make a contract for, they would receive most of the revenue from these things, but the town would be providing the service, which might bring people to town who have electric vehicles, and they might spend in our businesses.
How many are they looking at putting in?
Two banks of two, so a total of four.
Yeah.
And the Board of Public Works and the Department of Public Works don't want any part of having to maintain, deal with accounts, deal with money in, money out, which I agree, they don't really, they're not set up for that. So I think we left it off, Dana, where Weston and Sampson was going to solidify their proposal a little bit better for us with what they're going to do and the risks that they're going to assume. And then we could bring it to you from there. But I just wanted to make sure the board was okay with us continuing to look at this possible.
Sure. I mean, it doesn't seem like, it seems like it's being set up, so there's no risk to the town or no cost.
And the town would own them from the beginning, and we would get them paid for through National Grid grants, okay? The issue would be, after three years, if you didn't want to go with the same contractor, can you find someone else that would do it, you know, without charging you? Or if it goes well with them.
Town could take it over.
Well, if it goes well, you, yeah, the town could take it over, but how much do you really make off of that when you put the time into it? Or you could continue with them if it went well, another three-year contract. The town would, would get a little bit of money, and they haven't spelled out the percentage of the take that we would get versus what they would continue to, to take. But it's more about, it's not really about the town making money. It's about the town providing something that most downtowns already have, without assuming the risk or cost of it, and maybe making a little money. Are you okay with that kind of concept?
Yeah, so this is a zero-cost situation.
That's what we're going for, yes.
Okay. And even after three years, if we wanted to remove them.
There are, so we could shut it down, and we would have to pay the cost of removing them.
Of removal. Okay. And can we find out, too, what the cost of disposal would be?
Mm-hmm.
I know that there's usually a pretty high cost of eliminating any of these.
Might be able to sell.
Dana wants one for her driveway.
We just unplugged the drive.
So we'll bring, when we have a tighter package, we'll bring that back to you so you can evaluate it.
Yeah. I have no questions on that. I think, I think it's great. I mean, if we can do it and it doesn't cost us anything, fabulous.
Did they come to you?
I do not remember. I, the, the start of this was before my.
Originally, they came to the superintendent. And the issue there was, they said, well, we're going to get a grant to put it in the ground, but if you don't get as much from the grant as you thought, the town will be on the hook to make sure that the installation gets completed. So there was a flaw there. Then I, Mike and I talked to them, and we said.
This is Grid or Weston Sampson?
Weston and Sampson. Grid just gives grants, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and we talked to them and said, well, you know, aren't there ongoing expenses? There's a monthly cell, cell phone bill for the dialer. There's certain maintenance requirements. There's a system for getting the, the user's money, and, and where does that go, et cetera. And we brought them around to the fact that we wanted them to try a kind of an all-inclusive, we don't care really if they leave with most of the revenue. That's not what we're saying. But they're assuming the risk, because their revenue is only going to come in if these things get used. If they're not used, they're going to lose money on it.
Now, these, these charging stations are going to be powered off our own conduit, correct? Like, from the lines in the municipal lot, which the town pays for.
The meter will be in the name of Weston and Sampson, and they will pay for it.
So that meter pit will belong to them, and they will receive the bill?
Because these are the things I was asking. I'm like, yeah, you want to put a thing in and leave, and then we have to run this thing, and we're not really equipped to do that. And so, yeah, we have gotten them to a point where they said, said yes to all of this. We just haven't seen it in writing yet, so.
Yeah, the contract they sent needed some clarification.
Yes.
So we're.
Especially like, what do they make out of it? What do we make out of it? And I want to see in writing that we have no risk or reliability.
Okay.
Even though we do own them. We will own them.
We'll own them. Yeah, let's make sure.
For years, we do nothing with them.
Sure. Let's make sure in the contract that it identifies if there's a, like a hazard or a risk, if it should catch on fire, like, who's responsible for that? I mean, I understand we own them, but would it be replaced? Is it a no-cost replacement because they originally installed it? Like, let's just make sure that we cover all of our bases. Okay. All right. Well, that's good. I mean, it's great to have for people to be able to utilize.
So we'll, we'll bring you that. That was my report.
Thanks, Dana. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Other business. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $100,977.17.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the General Laws, the contracts and amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 111022 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's November 14th, 2022, open meeting.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on the annual State Cultural Council grant contract in the amount of $5,500.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to consider approving an order for the Fire Department vehicle radios in separate order for air packs.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And on that one, I just wanted to mention, we got a total of, for the air packs, between the grant and the town, we had a total of 222,810. And of course, their, their order was a little less than that, so we have it fully covered.
Good.
I will entertain a motion to approve all alcoholic beverage license renewals as listed below.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the wine and malt beverage package store licenses as listed.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor?